All right, good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Fruta City Council meeting. Good to see we have a full house tonight. So we're gonna go ahead-
Full and happy house, Mayor. A full and happy house.
Call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counselor Buck is excused absent. Counselor Lenhart?
Here.
Counsel Harvey?
Here.
Counsel Cry?
Here.
Counsel O'Brien?
Present.
Counsel Bremen?
Here.
All right, we're gonna go move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand with us. I'd like to ask that you all join me in a moment of silence for all faiths and beliefs to have a silent prayer. Thank you, if you'd join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
What changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor?
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I second.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Cry?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, we're gonna move into our proclamations and presentations. We've got two tonight. So our first one is proclamation. So I've asked Heather to read that proclamation for us. It's proclaiming February 14th to 19th as kindness is contagious week.
Whereas the city of Fruta recognizes the value of simple acts of kindness performed without prompting or reason, and how these acts can positively impact the performer, the recipient, and onlooker of the good deed. And whereas people of any age can participate in inten- I think it's supposed to be international, but it doesn't. No, is it intentional? It is intentional. Okay, never mind, I'll just shut up and read. Okay. Whereas people of any age can participate in intentional acts of kindness at any time, any place, and for the unselfish purpose of spreading goodwill. And whereas by providing intentional acts of kindness and reaching out to one another regardless of socio or economical statics, education, gender, origin, belief, religious belief, age, lifestyle, or abilities, we extend an opportunity for grace, dignity, and acceptance that might not otherwise be offered. And whereas the Fruta City Council has challenged each school in Fruta to perform 307 acts of kindness as part of the International Week of Kindness, now therefore be it resolved that the Fruta City Council does hereby proclaim Monday, February 14th to Saturday, February 19th, 2022, as kindness is contagious or kick week.
All right, thank you, Heather. We have some students from the Fruta 8-9 School and the high school. Are they here? Would they like to come up and say a few words and accept this proclamation? If you guys would like to step up to the microphone up there? Who's gonna volunteer to say a few words about kindness is contagious? If you're gonna step around the other side and-
Okay, so we're super happy to be here tonight to talk, to be here to celebrate the proclamation of kick week. And I think it's super cool that we're able to do this because we've just been like reading a book and talking about how deep kindness and how it can really like affect people and make them so much like feel so much better and how it can really change someone's life by just like going a little deeper. And we really are happy to like get out to the deeper, more students in our school and in our community by like decorating police cars and with like kind messages and just like putting notes and compliments all over our school for the kids and just helping people to feel more involved and to be kinder to them, especially during this time, and just make everyone feel better and to make them feel like they're involved and better.
Well, thank you. All right.
We're here from the high school, Shaylee and I. And we've been working a lot with the district kick week communities and groups with all the school districts. And we've spent a lot of time this year just to learn how to spread kindness to our community. And we're really thankful for this opportunity and for everyone to recognize it. And just to recognize how easy it is just for one simple act of kindness and how it can spread like a ripple effect. So, thank you.
Thank you. We love to see students involved in our community, so that's great in a positive way. Would you have a proclamation certificate?
Can I make a request, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Well, can you come back to us in a couple of weeks? Can you find out what all the schools in Fruta? Because we challenged you to do 307 acts of kindness. So get with the other schools. We'd like to hear what some of those acts of kindness are. Okay, could you come back in a couple of weeks? That'd be great. Thank you.
Well, let's give them a round of applause. All right. Now we're gonna move into our presentation. We've got our Fruta teacher and student of the month. This was supposed to be for December and we had to move it back to tonight. And it's for Monument Ridge Elementary School. So I'm gonna come up front. It's a little easier to do this. I've asked for a little bit of help tonight, so. All right. So it's always a privilege to be able to see our students and our community and our school district here. So tonight we get supporting Monument Ridge, just so everybody knows, if you didn't notice by now. But we've got, we leave this up to the principal to choose who the student of the month is and or teachers to choose that. And we also choose a teacher. What's a little different tonight is that all the teachers are being recognized for that. So, thank you, Emily, for that. Teachers and teachers and staffs, let's say, you know, for her whole school. She's got a great school over there. So I'm gonna read the name of the students and then we're gonna have, Karen's gonna help me hand out, we've got I heart Fruta button. Then we have extra rec center passes. So we hand out a pass and then we also give a button to each person being recognized. So our first one is Olivia Hopkins. She's a fifth grade student council president. So if you'd come up. Stay up here when you come up. All right. Our next one is Kazlyn Carruth. She's a student council historian. Kennedy Ferrins. She's the council secretary. Jack Flor, the council treasurer. And I don't know, can we fit everybody else up here? The next one is just for the Monument Ridge School, elementary school staff. So let's have all the staff stand up and have Emily come on up and she can take the certificate. Did you wanna say anything, Emily? I know you're never short on words.
As the newest school in Fruta, we are really proud and honored to be part of our community. And there was no way we could pick a staff member or a couple of staff members because it took this entire team to get this school open and running. And we brought a few more on this year. So I'm really proud of each and every one of them. And we have nearly our entire teaching staff here and support personnel.
All right, let's give them another round of applause. Did anybody want photos quick before? Did you want, did anybody want photos of, or did you? And they've got buttons. They've got buttons and passes, so. Come on, Karen. All right, we're gonna take a two-minute break so everybody can get photos and pass out buttons. How's that?
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our public participation time. So if you guys wanna stay, you're welcome to stay the whole meeting. We won't stop you from doing that.
No, they have, they have lesson plans to do. Did you get enough? Okay, all right.
She got two for herself.
One for your dad?
I kept another one, too.
Let's go back to Deb. There's lots of room up front. There is, there's lots of room now up front. So if anybody wants to move up closer. As close as you, yeah. All right, with that, we're gonna move into our public participation. So this is time set aside for council to listen to comments from the public that do not appear on the agenda. We normally do not take any action on these items. And we'd please ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? At one hand here, if you wanna step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Archie Lopez, 1681 Ruby Lee Drive. And I just wanted to come pray for you guys' meeting tonight and get started. Thank you, Father, for this time, for each one of these council members who comes and decides on the city's issues. And we pray that you would give them good discernment and wisdom to make good sound judgments that would bless this community. And you show his name. Amen.
Thank you, Archie. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on something? All right, if you'd please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Day, 1676 Fowler. I don't look anything like my picture, do I? You wouldn't know it, but an hour ago I was covered in mud, my head to toe. Two hours ago, I was up on top of the mason. And I really just wanted to try to get here on time. But I was inspired by something you said at the last meeting. And I wanted to share some thoughts. Not going back to anything that was discussed the last meeting. I just wanted to share some thoughts because I hear it quite often. And, and I've been asked about it quite often. People get a little bit frustrated over, you know, I don't understand the law. I'm not a lawyer. Would know it, but I've been all the way to the Colorado Supreme Court on everybody's behalf that's in, only to have the door shut. We have a lot of quasi judicial stuff on today's plate. I would say the best way to approach that in the plain language of the law, the way the Constitution reads that these our laws are supposed to be such that men of common intelligence can understand men in the generic sense. But as council members, when we're considering that quasi judicial item, just the facts. Those lawyers, let them deal with the semantics and all the headaches of the law and the specifics of the law. You have a presenter comes up, gives you their presentation, why they wanna do it. Is it good for all of the city of Fruta or not? Do they have all of their ducks in a row or not? Law isn't necessarily, in my opinion, because my journey has taken me all the way through the state legislature and all the way to the Colorado Supreme Court. In that sense where you're arguing a violation of, say, the Constitution or a state or a specific law or a specific ordinance, it's different than this setting. Quasi judicial is one step away from a robe. And all we have when we're sitting in this seats are the facts that are presented to us on that day by definition, by plain language of what is now. So breathe.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? All right, please step up and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Daniel Schellebarger, aka Suelo. And I live on 41349 R Drive. And I have a proposal. I was just talking to the advisory board last week, Ken was there, and about possibly having a community garden or having our community garden that already exists, which is now homeless, and putting it on public land. And I, I can hand these out to you guys. So I was thinking, we've had the community garden going since 2016, and it's been on private property. And the owner has other plans. And the guy that was managing it was the tenant, and he has to move on. So, and then I was brainstorming with some friends and we're thinking, well, why not have it on public land? In a park, possibly. And everybody at the advisory board meeting thought it was a great idea. So I thought I would present it to this council. And so yeah, I have, I've got the plan written down here. It's a tentative proposal. There'd be a total gardening space of maybe 45 by 26 feet, 1,200 square feet, not including a tool shed and possibly fruit trees surrounding it. There'd be maybe 10 plots for individuals or families and one larger communal plot where everybody could work together on that and it could be donated to different causes like the food bank and and there would be no fee required, just people required to put in some hours on the communal plot, plus their own individual plots. And so I was thinking, different places where the garden could be.
I ask you to finish your thoughts.
Yeah.
Your three minutes is up, but yeah, finish what you're saying and then we'll, because normally something like this, we'd bring to a workshop.
Okay.
We'd have to get that on a thing, because I know you talked with, and that. So, yeah, I want you to finish your thought. I don't want you to leave without, you know, getting-
Yeah, so basically you guys can just look these over and think about it. And the last two pages might, the, the, the place that I was thinking about that might be most promising is behind the community center. There's a little plot of land there. And I think Janine Purser is going to look into that. But anyway.
And also, I think, Karen, are you on the, are you the Parks and Rec? I also told Daniel he should maybe talk to Parks and Rec because yeah, it would be, need to be on board with that, too, so. But yeah, and a workshop.
And I could just add, this is good timing because the Parks and Rec department's actually looking into a grant of creating a community garden at the community center. So I think we could all just get together and talk through that. But they're, they're actually looking into that already as well.
So can we, can we hook him up with Mark? Or get him on the agenda for the next Parks and Rec? Thank you. So talk with Mike Bennett afterwards and give him your name and number. And we'll get you on, we'll get you the meeting time of the next Parks and Rec meeting.
Or you can come see him during the day, so you don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Did I say after?
Is it after, yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go talk to him. He'll hook you up. It'll be great.
Well, thank you, Daniel. See for perfect timing. Yeah, thanks for coming. All right, is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna close the public participation and we're gonna move into our consent agenda. So these are all items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before council. And so they're all gonna be approved with one motion. So with that, we're gonna open up the consent agenda to a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna close that and bring it back to council. And I think Matthew, you had a question on an item.
More of a clarification. So part of the consent agenda is to approve the heirs on the resolution for creating a housing authority.
Yes.
And I did talk to Michael earlier this week just to confirm that voting, having that approved through the consent agenda, is not an approval for the housing authority. It's only for the changing of the language. So is my understanding correct on that?
Hi, this is Mary Elizabeth. So I will step in on that. You've already approved the, informed the housing authority, so this doesn't change that vote. It's just to, it's on the consent agenda because all it's doing is correcting those typos.
I just wanted to confirm it didn't supersede the original vote.
It does not. It does not change that at all.
Right, thank you.
All right, any other questions or do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Cry?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel Lenhart?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our public hearings. So we've got one quasi judicial hearing and, and then we've got four legislative. And so our first item, just so everybody in the audience knows, we'll listen to, we've got a quasi judicial hearing. We'll hear a staff presentation. Then the applicant, applicant will present and then we'll allow time for public input and then bring it back to council. So we've got our city planner, Henry Hempel, here to present on our Red Cliffs 3 planned unit development.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's good to be with you here tonight. A little nervous when there were so many people in the, in the room. But then I recognized most of them. Most of them are teachers to my kids, so that eased it up a little bit. But nonetheless, let me pull up my screen here real quick. And then we'll get started. Okay, so as the mayor alluded, I am Henry and city planner here. And I'll be giving this presentation on Red Cliffs 3. This includes a final PUD plan and an ordinance adopting zoning regulations to zone it actually, PUD. And that, that will have the land use control of the subdivision proposed tonight. So as we kind of move along, just keep in mind that two separate motions and two separate discussion items for each. But I like to consolidate the presentation into one because they do kind of go hand in hand. Here's an aerial, or not an aerial, this is a landscaping plan that shows the, the layout of the subdivision. Down in the southwest or southeast corner is the bike park that we're all familiar with. And this is a little piece of land that's known as Lot B of the Red Cliffs subdivision that's now getting proposed for a replat essentially into these eight subdivided lots with a common parking area and landscape buffering nearly on all sides. This is a zoning map. You can see there on the left and then a, an aerial photograph on the right that shows, you know, a mental picture of exactly where we're talking about. Red Cliffs has been going through, just finished up its last iteration of filings ever since the 1980s when it was originally platted. The filing 2 essentially was just completed within the last few years and is getting built out with, with dwelling units on those properties. Like I mentioned before, it's an eight lot subdivision. And it'll take access off of Applewood Drive or Applewood Way and not Red Cliffs Drive. The spacing there is a little too close to the intersection of Highway 340 with the location being to kind of that intersection that you see there on Applewood Way at the bottom. Touch on legal notice real quick and just enter into the record that it was all accomplished within the time period that's allotted in the land use code. The land use code sets forth criteria, it needs to be no less than 15 days prior to the first public hearing. The public hearing for the planning commission happened July 11th. And all the legal notice happened in mid-December with the earliest to the planning commission occurring 20 days, which was in the local newspaper. So as we skim through and look at the approval criteria, these approval criteria were considered with the preliminary PUD plan. And then essentially the applicant turns in response to comments and addresses any review comments that were necessary to either meet or get to meet those criteria. There's 15 approval criteria. Those are in the staff report that was in your packet. And that's set forth in section 17.17.030 of our land use code. And so as we, as staff considers, sends the application out for review and then reviews the submittal, the final plan and the PUD zoning ordinance in accordance with those approval criteria. They are all considered met or can be met if the review comments are adequately resolved. That's really the big one with most subdivisions. You know, there's outstanding, you know, review agency comments. You water, Excel Energy, the fire department and city staff. And as we work through those, you know, the staff does not see any, you know, high level, really red flag issues to move forward that would necessitate like a redesign. So what you see on the plan is essentially what's gonna be platted and constructed if the applicant does decide to move forward with, you know, construction and, and moving on. And so we've seen all that. We've reviewed all that. That's in the, the staff report is being met or can be met. And then as we review the, the rezone criteria to review the ordinance to, for the zoning, we really do need to, to review the PUD criteria in chapter 17 and then the rezone criteria in chapter nine of the land use code. And two of the, two of the criteria need to be met out of the five. And it meets criteria number one and number two, compatible with the surrounding areas. And the proposal establishes zoning and land use criteria that no record was previously established or that, that we can find through title or through our archived records. And so this can establish that and that's good for this property if you wanna kind of get it to, to mesh well with the existing and surrounding land uses. Review comments, public comments in the planning commission. All review comments are included with the staff report and we don't see any issues or red flags with those. Written public comments have not been received by staff at this time and no verbal public comments were given at the January 11th planning commission meeting. And the planning commission recommended approval. And here's the, the motions. These are contained on page 254 of your council packet for reference. You just go to those. But staff does recommend approval of the final plan with the resolution of all review comments and issues identified in the staff report and to adopt ordinance 2022-08, which would amend the official zoning map and establish that basically overlay of the zoning of the property. And I should mention that anything not called out in the ordinance, there's a call out for community residential to then revert back to. So if there's something that's left out, then staff can revert back to that for administration. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. And we've got the owners up here. Would you wanna add to that presentation?
Yeah, thank you, Henry. And Mayor Kincaid and council members, my name is Kevin Bray. I'm the, represent, I'm a representative for Dinosaur Holdings, which is the owner and also the applicant on this request. I just wanna tell you that I appreciate your kindness and consideration tonight as you're considering this request.
Okay, that was good.
This is a really small project, but a small project has all the same requirements of a large project and many of the same complexities. So I just wanna say thanks to Henry and the staff. We've enjoyed working through this project. We've enjoyed working through this project with them and I know there's been a considerable amount of staff time and their expertise on this project. We went into this project really thinking we were doing something out of the box. But as Henry's explained it to you tonight and tells several times that the project prior, the prior zoning actually was out of the box because there was no rules. So previously there was no box and we had to create the box for this project. So unfortunately, I can't tell you it's out of the box. It actually fits squarely within the box that we had to create for this project, so. We'll try to do something more out of the box on the next one, I guess. With that being said, I don't, I agree with Henry's report and again, we appreciate your consideration of our project and certainly available for any questions that you might have.
All right, thanks, Kevin. We're going to open it up for public comment and then we'll come back with any questions. All right, with that, we're going to open this up to public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, now is the time to do that. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to council. Are there any questions, comments?
I I just had a question and I don't know if I just missed this somewhere, but you know, the I guess it's the request for the variance. That was from twenty twenty and it was signed by, I think, the the homeowners or the Red Cliffs board. Could you?
Yes.
Say more about that?
I think you're referring to kind of the short term rental.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I don't think it's allowed in their covenants.
Okay.
And so that law, that outlaw was essentially kind of encompassed in that in that HOA, right? For maintenance and irrigation purposes. And the property owner approached the homeowners association. And this is all kind of high level, this happened quite a while. And we don't necessarily get involved with HOAs, but we want to make sure that obviously the property owner is aware that they might need to address this. I think what they were trying to do is dot all their i's and cross their t's to make sure that the project that they wanted to do and the land uses associated with it were addressed. And they received that letter from the at that time, the HOA president acknowledging the fact that, you know, they could do that on that property. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I mean, it didn't say, it didn't say who it was addressed to, but then signed who it was from. And so I didn't know, is that, I mean, you're wanting to do rent, those are going to be short term rentals? Is that part of it or is that something that I?
So I sorry, I think council member Lenhart, the the plan really was mostly to have flexibility in the project, knowing that we're we're doing something that was going to be a little bit more expensive as far as the landscaping and buffering and and trying to keep that option open. So what I would say is that and I don't think that it's not allowed, but it's not, it's not specifically in the in the covenants as Henry mentioned, I just want to clear up, I don't think it's specifically not allowed and it's not specifically allowed. So we wanted to go and have that piece in the record so that we can make it a part of our application so that the council will at least be aware that we had gone and had that conversation with the HOA. And they were, they were in favor of allowing that on the site. So I hope that answers the question. And as far as whether or not there would be vacation rentals, I I think that's really going to be dependent on the market and where we're at when this project comes to fruition. But that's certainly a plan for that to be an option at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Back to that, just I think it says in the PUD guide that one of the properties can be short term rental, is that correct or am I misreading that?
Get that up there. Maybe I'll just stand here.
Page is that? Page two fifty-nine?
That's a footnote reference.
Oh, one is the footnote. Okay, that's always like, that's strange, only one, okay, thank you.
I was a little bit confused also.
Yeah, I mean, I think just reading that and they and I was confused on was the HOA going to manage the rentals? I mean, it kind of alluded to that in in that document and I just, it sounded.
So the so the way that we've planned this and the way that it would have to be in in this case in terms of management would be so that all all the units are intended for single ownership. So they can, they could potentially and would likely all be sold to individual owners that would be wanting to purchase either a home or maybe a rental property in Fruta or a vacation rental property. And they would have the ability to to choose which course they wanted to do. As far as the landscaping and the common areas, there will, there will be a separate HOA. So the Red Cliffs HOA is still a master HOA to that HOA. But they would be responsible on their own, these eight units for the maintenance of the parking areas and the common landscaping areas.
Are there any other questions? All right, then do we have, we've got two motions we need to make.
Do we have to make them individually and vote on it individually?
Yes.
Do the rezoning first?
No, we've got to do the PUD plan first, then the rezone.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we approve the Red Cliffs three final PUD plan with the condition that all review review agency comments and issues identified in the staff report be met.
A second.
Council Cry?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Council Bremen?
Yes.
Council Lenhart?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Mr. Mayor, I move, we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, amending the official zoning map of the city Fruta by rezoning approximately one point one eight acres of property located at two eighty Clements Way to a planned unit development zone.
I'll second.
Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Council Bremen?
Yes.
Council Lenhart?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Cry?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, well, thank you, Kevin, for being in here. All right, we're going to move into our legislative hearings. So we've got four of these tonight and our first one is resolution twenty twenty-two oh six, requesting to approve an amendment to the twenty twenty-two annual budget. And so we've got our assistant to the city manager, Shannon Bassett, here to present.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Each year, the city council has to approve a rollover budget amendment for projects that were budgeted in the prior year's budget, but then not completed, but will be completed the following year. So the the request before you is for several budget amendments to reappropriate funds from the twenty twenty-one budget to the twenty twenty-two budget. And they're outlined in the packet and kind of self-explanatory, but not a lot of, not a lot of new projects on this. We have reappropriating money for the state highway six sewer project that was budgeted in twenty twenty-one, but is going to be complete in twenty twenty-two. And we also have a few other small items, sixteen road rail crossing going to be completed this year, that's mostly development impact fees. And then we also have the fruit circulation plan, which was adopted on the consent agenda earlier today, closing out that grant and then also the wayfinding project, closing out that grant, which I think was also completed today. Finally, we do have a reduction in appropriation. What that is, is that we had expenses that we paid in twenty twenty-one after the twenty twenty-two budget was approved. So we just need to reduce the appropriation for the Pine Street Bridge to the amount that's specified in the cover sheet. So by the time we do all these supplemental appropriations and reappropriations, we'll actually have a slight decrease our general fund appropriation just due to that reduction of ninety-two thousand dollars of expenses paid in twenty twenty-one, but rebudgeted in twenty twenty-two. So that's pretty much it, but always happy to answer any questions if you have any. And here's just a quick summary of some of those projects. But yeah, this is something that we do typically every year just to complete and be able to fund projects that weren't completed in the prior year. And with that, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. With that, we're going to open up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, we're going to bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions on this? Then do we have a motion?
I'll do as best I can without my glasses. Adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh six, amending the twenty twenty-two budget to appropriate funds in the general fund, capital projects fund and sewer fund for completion of special and capital projects originally included in the twenty twenty-one annual budget and a reduction in appropriation for the Pine Street Bridge project.
Second.
Excuse me, Council Bremen?
Yes.
Council Lenhart?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Cry?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we're going to move into our second legislative hearing, resolution twenty twenty-two oh four, approving an amendment to the twenty twenty-two annual budget with a supplemental appropriation funds of capital equipment replacement or surf fund. I don't see Margaret here, so I take it Shannon is going to be presenting on this as well.
Yeah, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a request for a supplemental budget amendment to replace one of the vehicles in our public works department that we budgeted around ninety thousand dollars for in last year's budget. As we, as we went through the process, that ninety thousand dollars is actually just for the purchase of the vehicle itself and not some of the equipment that is used on the vehicle. That vehicle is used for deicing, sanding and applying may chloride, you know, when it snows in Fruta. So we actually need to amend the surf budget this year, an additional one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to accommodate the purchase of that vehicle and also the equipment needed for snow plowing operations. The good news is, is that the truck by itself is roughly around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on its own. But through through a RFP that the city and county of Denver put out, it was a cooperative agreement, so all local governments can actually attach on to that RFP. So we'll actually be able to get that same truck, which is usually around a hundred and fifty for ninety-three thousand two hundred. And then the additional one fifty-nine, which is before you tonight, is for the plow, the bed, the spreader, controls and installation of those as well. So staff request approval of this budget amendment. And of course, if you have any questions, I think either Kimberly, Kimberly or I could take those as well.
All right, thank you. We're going to open this up to public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions? You want to make Kimberly speak tonight?
Yeah. No.
All right, then.
Like, no, no, really.
Do we have a motion then on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move, we adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh four, amending the twenty twenty-two budget to appropriate an additional hundred and sixty-two thousand two hundred dollars from the capital equipment replacement fund designated fund balance in the general fund for replacement of the two thousand and seven dump truck.
Second. You're good.
Council Lenhart?
Yes.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Cry?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Council Bremen?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Shannon. All right, we're going to move into our third legislative hearing. It's ordinance twenty twenty-two oh nine, a second reading, amending chapter seventeen point four seven of the Fruta land use code. So we've got our planning and development director, Dan Karris, here to present on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Again, for the record, my name is Dan Karris, I'm the planning director for the city of Fruta. As the council might recall, at the November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one workshop, we discussed two pertinent code amendments that were specific to the timing in which the city would collect the impact fees for both residential and commercial construction. These is a relatively easy and simple code amendment from the standpoint that it really is just a couple, you know, tweaks to to the code that that are kind of specifically spelled out here presently and and illustrated in the staff report and cover sheet. We collect our residential planning clearances at plat. So as the council and the public might be well aware, we we typically have, let's just say, for example, a thirty lot subdivision that could have two filings, fifteen in the first filing and then fifteen in the second filing. So the the city would, at the point in which we entered into the development agreement, would collect the transportation impact fees for all fifteen of those legally conveyable lots or units at the time of that, of that plat. What we're proposing is to is to transition to a process that we had previous to twenty twenty, which was for those to be paid at planning clearance. And then something that is a little bit different for commercial construction, since we collect those at the time that the impact occurs, which is at planning clearance, to now collect those at the certificate of occupancy. Part of the impetus, if the council might recall, when we talked about this, we certainly have quite a few supply chain issues that are taking place that are specific to the construction of of new homes and commercial construction. It seems like the carrying costs and the length at which those projects are are under construction has been somewhat magnified due to the pandemic and and we certainly believe that, you know, this is a a good way to show a gesture that that we don't want those compounded carrying costs in the form of interest for for development loans or for construction loans for new residential to just essentially passed on to the end user, which is the homeowner or the business owner that doesn't have a material relevance to what they're getting out of the cost of construction. So as you might recall, you know, houses in pre twenty twenty, a lot of times took play, like took five or so months to construct. And now we're seeing a situation where they could take seven, eight, nine months and just the carrying costs alone certainly are not are not solely taken up by the individual that is either building that speculative house or building that custom house. And so it seemed like the relief is really just on on that, on that material interest difference that that might not make its way into a project. And the same thing for commercial construction, kind of honestly on a larger scale, larger scale being that you know, we've seen a number of buildings, one specifically monument powder coating and then a couple other remodels that have taken place in our downtown core that have been at construction for for over a year. I know that monumental, our monument powder coating took over a year and part of that is just getting supplies. So, you know, they're they're able to call for inspections, they're able to source things locally, but things like, you know, steel braided gas lines or other plumbing fittings or electrical fittings are are taking a long time to to get to the site and then placed into these buildings. So certainly that's not the only impetus for for making this code change. But it seemed like when we, when we had this discussion, November thirtieth, that this was a good step to take, just considering the fact that when we originally took this up as a code amendment, you know, some, some pretty significant things have changed to the economy and to the into the construction space in twenty twenty-two and in twenty twenty-one. So I transitioning slightly, we can certainly, you know, have a Q and A with regards to the impact fees. But the the drainage impact fee is really just a, is really just a change to the base level fee, which is going from that seventeen and seventeen thousand and change to eighteen, almost nineteen thousand, which is just the base rate. And then it is associated to the CPI index that is published at the United States Department which is specifically embedded into our land use code. When we took this, this change, which was really precipitated by the finance department, which was due to the fact that we hadn't updated that base rate since two thousand and nineteen. Part of the the reasoning for that is that we have embedded that base rate into our code. So when every single time that changes, we do need to change that base rate. We're, we're thinking about simplifying that and taking the base rate out in the future. But at the time that we generated this code amendment, that wasn't what was published in the ordinance. And so I, but I did want to kind of specify one other thing, which was in talking to Sam, our city engineer, we typically for the for the CPI, we go from end of second quarter to end of second quarter. So kind of June thirtieth, July first to July first, and then that that makes its way into the budget. And so, which would be kind of like a six month lag, so to speak. And so what we're thinking about doing in the future is is either taking that base rate out and 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 doing that for all impact fees during the budget cycle. But we do need to make that modification just based off the fact that we're, we're three years behind on modifying that base rate. But as the council recalls, at that November thirtieth workshop, the drainage impact fee base rate was not pertinent to the discussion, but this was generated because we did need to update that and we hadn't done it for the, for the past few years. So with that, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor, and the staff recommends approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two oh nine.
All right, thank you. With that, we're going to open up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, we're going to close that and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions for Dan before he leaves?
I do. Um. I didn't remember the.
I didn't remember the November discussion until you brought up the supply chain stuff. But I did remember the discussion we had in 2020, how we changed it so we collected all these fees at once. So we had them so we could pay for the, pay for the way. And we had a certain amount of time to keep like transportation impact fees, if I'm recollecting. We can hold on to those without using them for so long, correct?
I believe it's seven years, correct?
Seven years, and then we have to use them. We have to tie it to the area and actual impacts that we're creating by developing the subdivision. Okay. That's all I wanted to make sure that I was remembering that right.
Correct, yes. So, so the transportation impact fees for really residential and commercial are levied upon projects that precipitate adding capacity to those roadways. Any impacts that the development itself costs, like are the development itself impacts are ones that, that they're, they're burdened with, with that project. So if they need a widening for a turn lane that is warranted from the traffic study, they still have to do that. This is just specifically the, the capacity. So like the, at wide, or like adding a lane, so to speak.
Gotcha. So I guess at some point, it, it may make sense to sort of revert back to collecting all of them if supply chain issues kind of get figured out.
Correct, I mean, the, we took this to council at the workshop, you know, that really was the, the impetus of it. And, you know, just wanted to make sure that, you know, we didn't keep with a policy that didn't recognize things that had changed in the marketplace.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, before you ask for a motion, I do need to note for the record that the staff report for this ordinance and staff report for the ordinance following this one were inadvertently left out of the council packet. And so I did provide you with copies of those on the dais before the meeting.
Thank you, Dan. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion? All right, I'll try this once again. I move that we adopt ordinance 2022-09, second reading, and ordinance amending certain sections of Title 17.47 of the Fruit of Land Use Code concerning the timing of payment of impact fees and amending the drainage impact fee base value.
Second.
Council Harvey?
Yes.
Council Cry?
Yes.
Council O'Brien?
Yes.
Council Bremen?
Oh heartedly, yes.
Council Lenhart?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we're going to move into our fourth legislative hearing. It's ordinance 2022-10, a second reading, amending chapter 17.07 and 17.09 of our Fruit of Land Use Code. And it looks like we've got our city planner, Henry Hemphill, presenting on this tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's me again, Henry, from Planning Department, sharing my screen here for this ordinance 2022-10. This ordinance is pretty interesting to us because we get to get a little bit more creative in kind of how we're administering and providing land use discussions, not only with the public, but local business owners and entrepreneurs. This one involves mobile food vendors and mobile vending courts. It's an idea that's not the mobile food vendors, that's not really a new concept. But the mobile vending court is somewhat of a, a new concept and, and fairly popular around the country. And is something that we've kind of looked at before as staff and, and brought to multiple workshops over the time that I've been here and Mike's been here over the, the past six and seven years. This was brought up at a, at a workshop, again, like Dan had mentioned before, the November 30th workshop, and staff received direction to move forward with some land use code amendment proposals and to provide some feedback to the Planning Commission and council. And so that's where we're at tonight. Tonight, you know, this ordinance includes adding actually a definition of a mobile food vendor. That's not clearly defined in our codes, so we'd like to just put that in there to, to clear that up. And then to also identify mobile vendor courts. It initially started out as mobile food vendor courts, but then, you know, through discussions with the Planning Commission in January, and then recalling some of the feedback that we received at the council workshop, including some, maybe widening that definition of allowed types of vendors that could locate in one of these permitted mobile vendor courts. So we took out the mobile food vendor court and just kept it as mobile vendor court. So that's the impetus for tonight. And so another element to this update is to essentially allow mobile food vendors to operate as a secondary use to a permanent use. And so an example of that is the Wave Food Drink or Wave Drinks pad site. They've got a concrete pad site, if you've ever gone through their drive-through. There's a pad site with some temporary hookups for utilities. And so an operator of like, let's say, a mobile vendor could locate there without having to come to the planning department and get a, an issuance of a temporary use permit, which does take some time to administer, get the right signatures, have the property owner acknowledge. So we wanted to take those strings out and just allow those property owners to say, hey, like, hey, we've got this pad site open for Friday, you know, we'd like you, you know, stuff like that. So we wanted to take that blockade out of kind of the procedural steps because we haven't really seen any real issues with that. And so with the mobile vendor courts, it would be reviewed similar to a site design review that are almost always administratively reviewed if they meet the land use code and the site design, design standards for certain areas. And so these review procedures would ensure that review agencies would be able to comment. Landscaping is considered, parking elements, sanitary facilities, utilities, wastewater discharge, so the gray water that comes out of those, and access and circulation. So we take all of those, encompass it into kind of a review procedure and make it pretty flexible with regards to, you know, site circulation and, and all of those review aspects. So that's what's before you tonight, kind of the long-winded explanation. As far as the Planning Commission meetings concerned, as I mentioned before, they, they really did talk about widening the definition on kind of what's allowed and be more flexible with, with the mobile vendors that may be allowed on a mobile vendor court site. And we've kind of initiated that discussion and bringing it to you tonight. And they, they were very excited to kind of see this. And Council Member O'Brien could touch on this, but approval was six to zero at that January 11th meeting with kind of that kind of widening that definition. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I'm sure that you guys might have some questions and don't want to be long-winded anymore. But the staff recommends approval of this adoption of this ordinance, 2022-10. And to be noted for the record on this aspect or this project, our deputy city clerk did enter into the record with the previous application at the staff report is again, was left out, but inadvertently left out, but is in, in your hands right now. The, it should be also noted that the cover sheet does cover kind of the one approval criteria is does this meet? Kind of the master plan and the intent. And through the review, absolutely, we want to contribute to the thriving downtown principle that's, that's built into that and contribute to our mission statement built in there that you have in the cover sheet. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to take any questions at any time.
All right, we'll hold that thought. We're going to open it up for public comment. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Are there any questions for Henry in this?
I, I think I assumed it, but now I'm remembering I didn't read it anywhere that I can remember. Does this change it so, I think right now currently, the food vendors, they can get like a six month permit? And does this sort of give them a way to operate all year?
No.
Okay.
The temporary use permits will still apply for certain uses in other areas. Let's say it's, you know, we're getting close to the Fourth of July and we're able to have fireworks. That fireworks stand that goes typically where it goes across from the gopher would essentially just come in for a temporary use permit, operate in our seasonal capacity, and then move on. Same thing with like, kind of peach, you know, produce stands, you know, those are seasonal in nature. So those will still apply. And some mobile vendors might not actually want to participate in kind of a permanent pad site. They might want to move around more often like they did.
But if I wanted to be in business longer than six months, I could do that under these new?
Yeah.
Okay.
As permitted under the mobile vendor court. And so there's a process for the permitting of that.
Okay, so I couldn't on my own, if, if there was one spot, go do it, I would have to have three?
The owner of the land.
Right.
Or accessory, it could be accessory to something or a part of a court, which has to be three, okay.
That accessory use comes with the impetus of like, it's okay with that property owner actually.
Right.
You can be here for an extended period of time without the issuance of that temporary use permit. Have to read, time you want to do it. And so it kind of just takes that out of, business owner can be a little bit more flexible with who's on there at what times, for how long.
Okay, are there still county regulations that applied like fire code and all that stuff? Okay.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, members of council, like on Lower Valley Fire Protection District's website, they have like the actual, I think it's the fuel gas code, and then also the fire code that, that each one of these sort of irrespective of permanent or temporary, still have to be inspected by Lower Valley. And then as far as the hookups are concerned, the, the mobile, like the mobile food trucks or the mobile vending, those are not inspected by the building department, but any of those hookups would be. And part of the reason for the nuance between the temporary and then also the accessory to a principal is that, you know, by law, we can't license operators to be in a space that do not provide accessible access to sanitary facilities. And so we have to thread the needle on, you know, the primary use, syncing up those hours of operation too. And I had to step out, I don't know if Henry mentioned that, but that's a very key piece to this because otherwise it would kind of be a non-starter.
Do you want to say something, Heather?
Well, I, yeah, so at Planning Commission, we had talked about, well, what if there was someone, you know, can, do we want to open it up to any, anything beyond just food? Like, what if there was an artist, you know, a jewelry maker or something that had a trailer that they wanted, you know, a cart that they wanted to pull up and be able to sell in this kind of setting? And, and we seemed really open to that kind of suggestion and wanted to bring it before council. And, and if that's something that we're interested in, the, the language in this, in the motion still says food vendors. Do we want to take food out?
But you mean mobile food vendor courts or just?
Concerning mobile food vendors and mobile food vendor courts, yeah, do we just want to say mobile vendors and mobile?
Yeah, so the, the mobile food vendor that comes before that is actually adding that definition and calling that out as a mobile vendor. So we are adding a definition to chapter 57 of our code to call out a definition.
I'm looking at the paper copy and not the electronic copy, so they're, they're different.
Well, she's looking for that. I'll ask the quick question. So I didn't see anywhere where we were, are we required to get a business license? Is that all part of this as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that the council is aware that originally when we generated this code amendment, it didn't have retail services in there whatsoever. That was at the same November 30th meeting, we had a conversation with council. It didn't seem like there was specific direction to, to add that in or add personal services. It seemed like there were just some specific examples of, of mobile vendors that might want to take advantage of placing a, a, a mobile vendor in a mobile vendor court or as an accessory to a principal use. We, we do need, you know, if we're going to make that modification to include those uses, if that's the desire of the council, we would have to then go back and, and modify, wouldn't change the outcome of this particular action this evening. But in Title IX of our municipal code, it does prohibit retail sales from taking place in anything other than brick and mortar businesses. And so if you want to widen that definition, you know, we'd have to amend that. I certainly don't think it would affect the trajectory of this this evening. We've communicated that with, with Mary Elizabeth, our city attorney, and also with Margaret Sell, our finance director and city clerk. But we wanted to make sure that we stayed true to the record, which was we generated this code amendment and published the ordinance specific to just mobile vendor or mobile food vendor courts. And so as we've gone through the hearing process, that, that definition has been widened not only by the Planning Commission, but, but certainly it seems like that's a possibility with the council. So if we make that modification to, to include retail sales and personal services, just want to make it clear that like, we're going to have kind of a, sort of a backend action to, to amend Title IX. But again, doesn't change the trajectory of this evening.
Oh, let me ask that question on that one then. Do we leave it as mobile vendor courts and then we bring the Title IX at a later public hearing? Is that what I'm hearing you say? Or are you saying we should define tonight what those other specific?
So.
Uses would be?
So i- if it's the council's direction and action that you want to add retail sales and personal services, I don't think that you need to continue it or that you need to wait for the Title IX modifications. We can just generate that, that municipal code amendment. It's not embedded in the land use code. This would just essentially be a signal that we need to, that we need to modify that.
But you said that we need to list what other, like, is retail good enough? Or does it have to be? That's just what I'm asking because you're saying we needed to, you, you said earlier, we needed to call out what the uses were. If it's not just mobile food, that it's retail and?
So it's our, it's our analysis that retail sales and personal services is covered because it's a land use category under our code, which captures primary uses under retail sales and personal services, and then also accessory uses. And so we think we're covered on that, you know, it's in the land use table, it's in the land use categories. Henry just brought it up this evening on the screen right there. So you can, you can look at the different uses that are, that are listed under retail sales. You, you mind maybe just kind of zooming that in a little bit?
I think that answered it, so then we'll just have to update the other part of the code at a later hearing. Any other questions? So I guess I've asked my final question is then, so mobile vendor courts is what is kind of encompassing everything is what we're, you guys are saying.
Correct. And again, that, that, that includes a pretty significant list of uses that in a lot of scenarios would, would not be able to actually locate just because they wouldn't be able to, to meet a building code or even, you know, how some of the, sort of the things that would be there for retail sales. But we were thinking about, you know, people that sold t-shirts or, you know, haircuts or, or things of that nature. It's really difficult to thread the needle if you just sort of list every single one of those things you might think. Really, the generation of this whole code amendment is the fact that nobody was really thinking about this a few years ago. And now everybody's thinking about it. And so just trying to keep it as flexible as possible, knowing that not every single one of those would, would likely be able to operate in a mobile, in a mobile vendor.
For instance, pharmaceutical sales would be kind of hard to, as I'm looking at this list, pharmaceutical hard sales would be kind of hard to do out of a mobile.
Or mortuaries.
Yeah. A mobile mortuary is a little scary.
But you, you know, the, the, the reality is, is that like, we, we really can't list out the, the various things that might or might not happen because it doesn't seem likely that a grocery store would operate, but somebody could certainly sell produce. You know, which, which when we would, when we would issue a planning clearance to operate that type of a use, it would be under the same land use category as this.
Ready for a motion?
Are you guys ready?
I'm ready.
All right.
Hey, I move we adopt ordinance 2022-10, second reading, and ordinance amending certain section of Title 17 of the Fruit of Municipal Code.
Title seventeen of the Fruit of Municipal Code concerning mobile food vendors and mobile vendor courts to include retail sales and personal services. Back up. Counsel Cry?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Counsel Breaman?
Yes.
Counsel Lenhart?
Yes.
Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, well, thank you. With that, we're going to move into our city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just one item tonight. I keep it short, but I'm excited to announce that we we've hired Ciara DePinto as our new communications and engagement specialist. She will start on March seventh is what we're looking at. She's been doing some incredible work at the in the Parks and Recreation Department for Grand Junction. We were we were overwhelmed with amazing applicants throughout this and and we had a lot of people that if we had a lot of positions, we might have hired. We definitely would have hired more than one. But she stood out among among applicants for the in-depth detail of skill set she has in a wide array of technical aspects plus the communication and writing and everything. So where we might have thought we might not have applicants that have such a wide array of of skill sets, we we were we were pleased to see many applicants with 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 such skill sets and and we're super excited to have her start. So you'll get to meet her later in March. We'll definitely have her come and and introduce herself and then you'll start seeing a lot of work that she's putting in.
Is Craig over in Grand Junction starting to get a little nervous that
Yeah.
we're using them as a recruitment tool?
They they they're definitely not not happy or bummed for number, the the second recently to to come over here, so.
Is that it?
That's it.
Just one item? All right. All right. With that, then we're going to move into our council reports and actions. So our first item, I asked Mike because I thought this would go on consent, but we need to have a motion because we're doing an election commission appointments. And so I've asked Emily Larson, who was here tonight, the principal at Monument Ridge Elementary School, and then also Steve Reichens. He's the president at Ute Water. And so just to serve on that, I did talk to Mike and we had the discussion about, we've got several things, and this is one of the items in our charter that is kind of outdated. And so we talked a little bit about after new council comes on to look at, do we want, because the charter would have to go to a public vote for any changes, but they've got several things that are outdated and this election one is one of those because we normally follow, you know, the state statutes on what we're doing. But we need to have somebody appointed to this in case the main reason would be if there's a tie in any vote. So so that's, so I asked them to put this on here because we haven't done this in the past. And so I want to make sure we're appointing as we need to. But I think that's something I'm going to raise that question after our new council gets on on looking at the next election cycle, updating that charter or, you know, because I'm, I think, Mike, you Mike can elaborate on this, but I think every so many years, we've got to review our charter and I think next year is that year that is coming up.
Yes, every six years.
And the last one was then in what year did we do that last six years ago? Was it six years ago?
Twenty twenty two minus six.
Whoa.
Two thousand sixteen.
It was. And and council reviewed it during that time and didn't make any, didn't consider the need for any changes. We do have a few items like this that, you know, the majority of things that this committee is required to do are are no longer needed with mail in ballots and the difference with polling places and things like that with state statute and working with Mesa County. The we've always had a long list of grammar changes and things like that from the charter, but with the charter being something that can only be changed by the vote of the people, we have never put it forward just for grammar edits from however many years ago that was written.
Grammar is a worthwhile thing.
So we thought now would be the right time as as we bring this up. So that's all I have on this one. If anybody has any questions on this item, otherwise we need a motion to.
So what will they do? I mean, once we vote them in, what what did they?
The only thing they really, the only responsibility looking at this in the event of a tie vote, then they would have to determine, you know, by state statute, by lot, the person or persons who shall be elected. So that's the really of the four things there responsibility. That's the only one that now is.
Correct.
But since we have nine people running for council seat, last time, I think when Ken ran, there was only about a fifty vote span. So I wouldn't put it past us to have a tie.
So what happens in a tie, like goes to foot race or?
That's what the election committee is there for. State statute says they do it by lot drawing and that they would, the election committee would oversee that. And Deb serves on that as well. Is that correct?
Well, then I move we appoint Emily Larson and Stephen Reichens to the Election Commission for a two-year term, February fifteenth, twenty twenty two through February fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Yes.
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 Counsel Harvey?
Yes.
Counsel Cry?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
All right, now we're going to go to council reports. Karen, are you ready?
Ready, and I have nothing.
All right, Kyle?
Arts and Culture Board met and we had a really cool presentation from Farm Fruit of the Fruit of Arts and Rec Marketplace, which is going to be in
Old True Value.
The old True Value and then later Fruit of Fitness Building. And it's going to be kind of a, it's going to be a cool space. Grand John Fermentation will be in there as kind of an anchor business, but there'll be multiple bays that are larger spaces that anything from retail to a restaurant could go into. They're planning on a space that will be designed as an art gallery with hopes that somebody will run that. And then lots of creative professional spaces, so studio spaces for artists, but also a space that might be used for a graphic designer or somebody that is working on booking music festivals in the valley or whatever it might be. Kind of broad use, but that was a really cool presentation. And then also kind of got an update. They're going to be starting, I don't know if you guys recall, but I had kind of updated you guys on one of the things they wanted to do is like short videos with fruit artists. And they're going to start filming those sometime soon. And so each one of those will be popping up, I think, like kind of on a monthly basis once they get started. So that's a cool project too.
Yeah.
That's it.
All right, thanks, Kyle. Ken?
AGNC meets next week. They do have Bonnie Peterson, who runs AGNC, is retiring. And so they do have her position and the Economic Development Development Coordinator. There's two positions there. Those jobs close the end of this week, the eighteenth. So if you know of anybody good, send them that way. They probably already know about it if they're good, but also Downtown Board met. We talked to Daniel Suelo quite a bit about community garden, places that might work. We talked about Fourth Fridays that are going to start in April. And we talked about Paper Day, which we're going to try to do next year. And also kind of did some brainstorming about the Melbury space to get ready for talking to the consultant about that space. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Heather.
I missed the Parks and Rec meeting this week because I had some that came up last week, so.
All right, Matthew?
This morning, bright and early at seven AM was the Grand Junction Government Affairs Committee meeting where we heard from all our state legislatures. Two bills and I apologize because I don't know the numbers that are of interest. One is with CDOT in terms of their maintenance fees for grants can be up to twenty four percent. So if you get a million dollar grant, they can take up to twenty four percent of that in terms of capping that and actually reducing what they can charge. So as we get grants, we actually get more of that actual money. And then there's a lot of discussion that there's, I think, about a hundred and ten new air quality regulations that are set to go into effect. Today, today was a busy day. Mike also attended at Robinson Theater at the university, kind of what their plans are for their fifty million dollar expansion in terms of boards, GJEAP. We meet tomorrow morning where we will get an update on their search for the new executive director. And the last thing is next Thursday and Friday, I'll be in Denver with the Grand Junction on their ledge trip. So I'll be visiting the Capitol over there. That was it for today.
On what trip? I'm sorry.
Grand Junction Legislative.
Legislative.
Yeah. So I think there's sixty five of us going over from the valley.
All right, thank you, Matthew. I've got had a chamber board meeting last week and so everything is going well. The banquet went over well. So one of the larger attended ones, so that was good. Starting the planning now for Farmer's Market and Fall Festival. Fall Festival is going to stay a two-day event. And I think we're going to try and not close the circle again. So I think the city staff will be happy about that one as well because I think that was a big traffic flow issue, always is with that. So, yeah, everything just moving forward with events and, you know, trying to stay on top of that.
Well, Farmer's Market say it's same location this year?
Planning on staying at the same location. So I think there's room to grow there and I think it's just a matter of people getting used to, you know, most people are very happy with the flow and that of that.
Right.
So that is all I have. Ken, is there anything else you wanted to add before I close the meeting?
Colorado National Monument Association meets next week. No, just kidding.
All right. All right, Ken normally has to put something in there. So with the hat, it is eight twenty one and we are going to adjourn. Thank you.